All right, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, December 11th, 2023. It is 5:30 PM, and this is a work session of Weston Joint School District Number One. Superintendent Wimmer, can you confirm the meeting was properly hosted?
Yes, it was.
Fantastic. Why don't we start with introductions by going around the table, and you can say your name and what your role is here today. So Chris Weigert, school board member, school board president.
Kelly Laine, school board vice president.
June Brubaker, board member.
John Allison, board member.
Kit Daly with EUA.
Bob Morris.
Jackie Michaels with EUA.
Molly Erica, board member.
Kurt Rumpfels, board member.
Chad Zemez, board member. Kyle Aist with Findor. Brian Treckel, Findor.
Dave Ross, former director of facilities.
Consultant and
Life coach.
Post small retiree.
Tim Harper, director of facilities technology.
And Don Wimmer, superintendent.
Great. Thanks, Rowan, I appreciate that, and I think whoever's taking the minutes for this is going to appreciate that as well. So tonight, we had this meeting set up as a work session. I know as a board, we've done a few of these, but just as a reminder, we don't have any action items, and the format is different, the seating is different, but from the format perspective, we're really hoping this is going to be a dialogue and a discussion. And these were a little more casual, a little more informal, but that's why we're seated the way that we are. And our only item tonight, but a very important item, is looking at the facilities report presentation. Kit, I understand you are going to be taking us off on this.
I am happy to do so. Yes, well, we are thrilled to be here. EUA and Findor have been already working on your facilities assessment for six months. It feels impossible that it's been six months, but it has. So we're excited to be here. It's a pretty important milestone to be able to bring forward your summary data. One of the challenges that we have whenever we do an assessment like this in a district with as many buildings and sites as yours is keeping it at a level that's actually something you can process and manage. So we really tried to summarize the findings and walk you through what they mean. That's our goal tonight. We also have access in your board documents to a full report, which is every building's detail, detail, detail. So we can reference that if needed as we're going through, but I think our goal tonight is to make sure that you, as a board and as an administrative team, can walk away with understanding what is the current status of our facilities. That's what this facilities assessment is. It is a current snapshot of current conditions. Can't say that enough. We are not solving things tonight. We're not recommending specific actions tonight. We're making sure that you understand the conditions of your buildings from a couple of different key perspectives. So we're going to walk through the summary. We're going to walk you through kind of each building's high-level takeaways. We would encourage questions as we go along, and just ask them. We're here to support. At the end, Findor is going to talk to you a little bit about next steps, so you know what's coming in January, because tonight is just our assessment. No costs associated with anything. It's just trying to understand where you're at. So we're going to walk through. There's a few sections here. We've been working hard again to kind of streamline it and get the key takeaways. So stop us as we're going along if you have a question, but I think we'll just start, we'll get started then. This is just our team that we're here. In addition to those of us around the table, both EUA and Findor have some additional resources that are a critical part of the team, which is not here tonight. So this is us. We can move on. All right. At the last meeting when we were here in November, we did introduce you to the process. This is a process that EUA has found is really helpful to our clients as we talk through what is a long-range planning, how do we let one step inform the other, et cetera. So again, at the top of the pyramid here, if you will, we have the facilities assessment. That's really the foundational information that we're sharing with you tonight, the outputs of that. We then work down from facilities assessment into some priorities and try and understand how do we begin to shape solutions, the right solutions for your needs here in Weston. Priorities eventually do become potential solutions. How do we solve problems? How do we address the needs? How do we move forward? And ultimately, at the very tip of that, you see long-range plan phase one. So what could be the first step in tackling significant needs in your district? You have multiple buildings, so with that, you know, the needs kind of add up. So our goal is to help you kind of narrow it as you go through. Each step along the way, you see community engagement. We know that's important to you. We're developing a process and a schedule and a strategy to help you engage community all along the way. So sharing out the results of this report is the first step of that as well. So we're prepared with a comprehensive news release to go out and to be ready to educate your staff and your parents and those, just, you know, as you get this information, to roll that out to your community as well. So each step along this process has different activities and strategies for community engagement, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But this is overall the process, and we kind of use the critical questions along the side there to guide us as we go through that work. So that's not anything new, but it does kind of ground us every time that we do it. All right, I think Jackie is going to summarize your district.
Let's ground ourselves in the grounding. So as we look at the facility study, we first wanted to understand what the basis of which your district is made of. So this is just a map showing those school boundaries and the school locations here in the city of Weston. And then what we did was we prepared these great little one-page summaries of each one of your buildings that we assessed. So we're going to start off with Rawls Early Learning. One building, the photo on the left shows the site plan, kind of the Google map. The image on the right is your floor plan with, and you'll see as we continue through these, they're going to be colorized based on the additions to each of the buildings with some raw data up above on just some basic information about each building. Decor Elementary had three additions to its building, and you can kind of see how they were added on and the site plan with it. And these are just going to continue in the same manner. Fair Park and its additions. Green Tree and its three additions, four additions. Jackson Elementary and its myriad of additions.
This one gets the rainbow.
It gets the rainbow, yes. McLean Elementary. Silverbrook Intermediate and its additions, just two phases there. Badger, its single phase after the original building. And then the high school, which when we look at them based on, depending on which part of the assessment we're talking about, for building conditions, we're going to look at this building as a single building because the systems are so intertwined. When we look at it from educational adequacy and building capacity utilization, we'll look at it separately. And then your district office, your education service centers.
These are designed this way so that you can use them as a quick snapshot, right? I think it's helpful to see, you know, the site, the building itself, all the years, all the additions were across the top. You have the square footage, you have the grade levels it serves, all of that. Enrollment is important information that we've found over the years. Our clients were continually sort of asking later in the process, well, when was that built again and when was that addition? So we've tried to develop a format that you can use as a resource going forward.
All right. So we wanted to ground you in our key takeaways first, and then we're going to show you how we got to each one of those key takeaways. So through this presentation, I'm going to handle the building conditions components of this, of this report, and Bob's going to handle the EAA, the educational adequacy, and capacity utilization. So when you hear us talk, that's kind of the hats that we're wearing as we kind of bounce back and forth. So in terms of building conditions, the first and foremost observation our team made was that you have aging buildings and that there are a good number or portions of all of your buildings, we just saw the colorized maps, where some of those additions or portions of are well over 50 years old. So it's telling us that your buildings are complex in terms of how they were added and how you kind of marry those additions together, but nonetheless, they are continuing to age. We do have ongoing capital maintenance that has been invested here in the district that we find to be tremendously positive. Where the district is investing in their buildings, you're going to see in the scores that you're going to see that it's a positive score. It's going up. So that's, it's wonderful to see that the investment is worthwhile and is being maintained. The large, the high school, we wanted to highlight, the high school is clearly your largest building here in the district and your most complex in terms of just when you want to touch something in your building, let's say, replace windows or even just replace ceiling. The scale of which that takes to do that is far more than any of your other buildings. So it just takes more because it's bigger. There are a good number of ADA deficiencies within your buildings. It doesn't mean you haven't done, made some tremendous efforts. We will note that, but there's still some work to be done in terms of creating accessibility for all.
And ADA means?
Americans Disability Act. That is the effort to make things compliant for people who need additional assistance, whether in wheelchairs, sight, you know, whatever, whatever may be. Interior deficiencies. So to summarize those, all of your buildings, there is wear and tear, standard wear and tear that we found within your buildings. Not anything out of the ordinary that you would see in a typical, typical school building. So your flooring, for example, if it's VCT, you're going to see some scratching, some scuffs, some chipping potentially, but nothing too out of the ordinary. There's of course the one-off instances, but overall, your buildings are seeing typical wear and tear. The exterior deterioration, there are some conditions in your buildings where the way that the additions were done or the way that they integrate with each other doesn't necessarily lend itself for easy maintenance. So there's, there's some opportunities there that just add complexity to the, to the building that's causing some deterioration. And then lastly, we have declining building systems. When we're talking about building systems, I'm referencing mechanical, electrical, and plumbing infrastructure that keeps your building viable.
All right, and I'll hit on educational adequacy. So building conditions is looking at the physical condition of each system within your building, right? Educational adequacy, we're looking at sizes, relationships, and types of spaces that are in your building, and how well do those amenities address the way that you're attempting to deliver your education within the building. So how well is it meeting the educational goals of the district is essentially what we're looking at. So we'll hit on a few things here. Minimal layers of security. As we look at educational adequacy, we're comparing sort of how your buildings are set up versus how we would set it up if we were to rebuild a similar building today. And so when we talk about minimal layers of security, we're talking about the lack of duplicity in the security system throughout the district. Pickup and drop-off concerns, I don't think that one's really going to be a surprise to anyone. There were some challenges at some of the schools where you have shared gym, cafeteria, auditoriums, or gym and cafeteriums, as some people like to call them. Special ed spaces throughout your district that were not designed for the current use, and that's not surprising because when most of the buildings in your district were designed, special ed wasn't really a thing. Undersized classrooms, and that's not everywhere. That's in some specific places, and we'll talk about that a little more as we go through it. Generally, in your district, outdated furniture, there have been some efforts to address that in some key spots here and there, but by and large, your furniture is still kind of from a few decades ago. Lack of natural light in key areas again, everywhere. High school is a big offender in that area. Lack of breakout space, which has to do with how you teach and creating spaces for students to go immediately outside the classroom for different kinds of learning besides just lecture delivery. And then library spaces, outdated library spaces are a theme we noted, just because that's an area where we see the educational delivery really changing from when your schools were built to what they are today. So we'll kind of talk about those a little bit more, a little bit more detail as we go through, but just a preview, so you know what's coming. And then I'll talk a little bit about capacity and utilization. We look at capacity in a few different ways, and those different metrics tell us some different things, and I'll get into all the gory details of that as we go further down. But capacity by desired class size does clearly demonstrate that all of your schools are under capacity. There is space in all of your buildings in some form or another, varies from building to building. When we look at some of the other metrics, metrics, capacity by learning area, that calculation kind of demonstrates a shortage of support space and space for that breakout and other types of learning that we see across your district. And so the comparison of those two numbers is kind of informative about the kinds of spaces that are available in the district. And then capacity by gross building area also demonstrates a lack of some of those sort of third spaces, kitchens, cafeterias, auditoriums, and other spaces for students to go outside of the learning environment. So in each metric, we kind of learn a little bit more about where your space shortages are versus where your space shortages are. And then the final thing, we know that the high school areas do not necessarily support your desired student-to-teacher ratio, so that's a significant bias.
So that was kind of a spoiler alert. We decided we're going to show you the findings, and then we're going to walk you through. So, everyone with us right now with what we've got? Okay. We also have a, this is kind of a large-scale placement that summarizes everything in a little snapshot. Hopefully, between that and these scorecards these guys are going to go through, this is helpful to you if you look at it.
Jackie's going to dive a little deeper into the actual physical conditions and kind of go through what we're looking at and categories there.
All right. So these are the categories that we have used as a basis for our review. Site, which, I can't get it correct. Site, which includes both pedestrian and vehicular access as well as pavement quality, site signage. ADA, again, that is the accessibility component of the building, where we're looking at parking, accessible entries into the building, restaurants, accessible routes, et cetera. Foundation and structural systems, so that has to do with the bones of the building. Roofing, roofing membrane, drainage from the roof. Exterior enclosure, so that is everything that holds the outside together. So your masonry, your metal panel, windows and doors. Interior includes all of the interior finishes, floors, ceilings, wall materials. And then miscellaneous, which we needed kind of a catch-all bucket. So we have toilet partitions, if you have theater or stage equipment, auditoriums, seating, bleachers, elevator lockers. And then we get into electrical, mechanical, and plumbing components. So that will be all of the equipment, including your electrical panels, your voltage, your plumbing fixtures, your mechanical ductwork and piping, et cetera.
We have two teams out there.
Oh, wow.
So it's 10 plus.
10 plus. Here we go, let me get that correction. I do want to thank the district for the baseline for which we used to do this particular part of the analysis. Davington provided a tremendous amount of information. Not every district has a backlog of data and the analysis that was provided, so we do really want to thank you for the kind of grounding that we were given here. All right, scoring. So we did share this last time. So for building conditions, we're scoring everything between a one and a five, with NA meaning that it's not in the building. So five meant that it was brand-new, literally being done before our eyes or recently completed. Where one meant it was critical, meaning it was something that probably should be looked at as a district rather quickly. Either a code compliance issue or something that clearly is in disrepair that could cause some immediate issues. The numbers in between, you know, are, have to deal with kind of the amount of wear and tear that we saw, and we determined as a team how we would decipher those. All right, scorecard. That again is very small. So you do have a placemat for this, the scoring for this area as well, and I just want to make a few highlights here. Silverbrook and Badger are green with the highest scores, and that reinforces the idea that where you have invested in your buildings is paying off. Those are showing to be the highest scores in the district. Where the lowest score is Jackson Elementary at 2.64, there's several factors to that, but the one I'm going to highlight here is the accessibility. I think clearly just off the bat, the main entry there is not accessible, with some other concerns there in terms of accessibility. You'll see the remaining elementary schools short of McLean. McLean comes in number three. There's been some investment there, including a brand-new mechanical system within that building. But Decor, Fair Park, and Green Tree are kind of averaging out as being similar, and the high school is coming in at 2.99, which is about fair average. All right, so let's dive in a little bit deeper and go through those key takeaways. I always, you know, we always think that pictures are worth a thousand words here, so we can, we can focus in a little bit more. So again, eight of your 10 buildings have significant parts that are 50 years old or more. This is a picture here of McLean, the, you know, the original entry to the building. And, you know, there's many components within your district that are, that are of this age or require additional care because of the age and intricacy that they have. Some of them are, frankly, completely destroyed. So it's really amazing how you have tucked all of that going and are kind of maintaining everything to the best of your ability expertise. The next, the next bullet is the capital investment. So this is an example of Silverbrook, where clearly you are starting to open the building up a little bit more. You're adding more modern materials inside the building. You are bringing, introducing daylight into the building a little bit more, and everything is just uplifted due to the level of investment you wanted to bring in. Clearly, it's showing off, it's paying off, and I would imagine also standardizing and streamlining the maintenance plans. The next takeaway has to do with the large-scale things of the high school. So again, just clearly because of the size of the building and the complexity of having a pool and, and all of the other standard high school spaces that you would have, it just lends itself to a more complex maintenance plan. So for example, if you could imagine walking around the exterior of that building and just, we made the decision to prioritize replacing all of the windows, what that would take to do in terms of the interruption of space or the interruption of the function within the spaces and the effort, the sheer effort to do that. You have many different conditions within the building, and trying to potentially streamline what that solution would be would be complex. Next would be the ADA deficiencies. So this is the example I gave where Jackson Elementary clearly doesn't have an accessible entry to the main entry. It doesn't mean it doesn't have an accessible entry, but the main entry is not. And I think that speaks to the breadth of your buildings, that many of them have components that are accessible. So for example, many of your multi-stall restrooms are accessible, but not, maybe not all of the single occupancy restrooms are. So there's, there's an in-progress approach to what the district is doing there. I also wanted to share that, for example, in a restroom, it may be that there's just one detail that's not compliant, and so we needed to check that that's not compliant. It doesn't mean the bulk of it isn't compliant. So for example, maybe you don't have the vertical grappar in a restroom. When we're making, when we're doing the assessment for accessibility, we're looking at it in the current code, and it could be that that addition, maybe was 50 years ago, the ADA code, you know, the approach to ADA was very different 50 years ago. So we're keeping that lens at the same time. Interior deficiencies. So this is an example of a typical classroom. We found this classroom probably in 90% of your elementaries with the kind of mismatched casework that I know has been trying, been trying to extend the life of that for some time, where, you know, you make it work. But the flooring is worn, the ceilings are, are fine, you know, but they're, they're seeing wear as well. You also have, in some cases, some operable partitions dividing the classrooms that, when's the last time they've been built? They've currently, you know, they've been built such that, or used such now that they're permanent. So to fix all of that or to repair some of that is, can be challenging, because some of it acts like wallpaper. So it's challenging to do some of that. Exterior deterioration. We've highlighted Decor here as an example. The photo here is, is an example of part of the roof where the water doesn't have a lot of places to go, and it can cause additional maintenance. It's probably not the most ideal in terms of trying to get water off a roof, which is what a roof's job is trying to do, but it's the condition of the building, and I think the district is doing its best to, to maintain that and, and keep it going. I know the district has a roofing or re-roofing maintenance protocol that they're keeping up with. When you look at those scores in particular, you'll see, you can, you can track right along where the last roofing was done and where the next one should be coming from, because it's reflected in. We did find some other one-off conditions in terms of exterior. Decor also has some significant masonry or crack in the southwest corner of the building. We're looking at that to understand more how that happened, but it's, it's not something we would typically see, and I wouldn't categorize that as wear and tear. There's something going on in that area of the building. Lastly, declining building systems. So this is, in some cases, your buildings have the original infrastructure. So this is a photo of the Fair Park boiler. I was telling it to how much I'm kind of intrigued with this piece of equipment. It's kind of cool-looking, and, you know, the history behind it is going to be pretty awesome, but nonetheless, I think the district is doing a great job trying to keep these systems going. You can imagine trying to maintain a piece of equipment like this. It would take quite a bit, and, you know, to, to keep some of them running. But there's other aspects of the infrastructure that I think the district is, is trying to focus on as well. The low voltage in particular, such as, you know, the fire alarm, data paging, and all of that is something that I think is something the district is looking at trying to, to upgrade. I know converting everything to LED lighting just to help standardize is something else that they're looking at. From a plumbing perspective, I know the district is also in the process of replacing fixtures, but the infrastructure, the piping, is most likely original to the building. So there's still some attention to it.
Any questions on this section? Are there any questions on building conditions? Sorry. It's a lot of data.
I'll just highlight one thing real quick. If we go back to these original categories, there are actually individual scores for each of these categories and each of these components. The sheet you have in front of you is this sheet, which rolls those up into categories. So we've taken all of the site components and we've averaged them together to give you an overall site score for each building. But if you look at the full report, you can actually see the breakdown of every score in each category, as I have detailed for you if you want to go there.
Can you clarify, we were talking about wear and tear. I think there's probably a difference between, here's a wall, the wall's great, it needs paint, versus, here's a wall, half the bricks are falling out. Neither, these are random hypothetical examples.
Right.
Talk about a little bit how that factors in your analysis.
So when we thought of wear and tear, we thought about, you know, if, if I'm looking at an elementary school, I'm going to think about how it's being used and what I would expect to see for that. So I would expect to see dings on the wall, scratches on the wall. Where the chair hits the wall, there would be maybe a line, right? Those are things I would expect to see, and I would, I would say that that's average wear and tear. Cracking within the masonry, I would not expect to be average, would not be wear and tear. That's a one-off condition that I would say probably does need attention, and we would want to address that. I believe that, you know, maintaining your building envelope, maintaining the outside of your building so that weather, bugs, what have you, does not come into your building, the unwantedness doesn't come into your building, is important in terms of maintaining the building, but it's above and beyond. It's kind of that next level of urgency, if I could call it that.
I think part of what will help to give you these context is in our next phase of this process to reduce the cost of the student with some of those deficiencies. That will help you to kind of understand the scale of the, like, we can place a cafeteria that's one scale associated with the
Like, we can place a cabinetry, we can have one scale associated with it, then be able to replace it with a template.
Pressure on how you can use those spaces. And more than anything else, it also creates sort of an inconsistency between your schools. So if your kids go to one school, they have different sort of gym opportunities than if they go to another school. And if you mix that sort of stage auditorium function in there, that just adds another layer of sort of complication there. So it's kind of an approach to what we're highlighting there. Special ed cases, I think is worth talking about, just because, like I mentioned before, special ed didn't really exist when most of your buildings were built. So what's happened over time, which is typical, not atypical for your district at all, is special ed is kind of placed in whatever classroom gets empty at the end of the day. And so we kind of see that as we walk through your buildings, oh, this classroom has been taken over for a special ed classroom. The amenities in those rooms aren't really any different than a standard classroom, but now the function of those rooms is completely different. So if we're designing a special ed classroom as a special ed classroom, what we can do is create some sort of breakout spaces, some looks of calming and quieting and different activities that happen in that space that a normal classroom doesn't really have. Also, the size of those classrooms will tend to be different because your special ed classrooms generally aren't seeing more than about 10 kids in them, but they're happening in a full-sized room. And so if we can kind of think about those in a different way, we can make those spaces work a lot more effectively and efficiently for you, I guess is what we're getting at. Undersized classrooms, and this is mostly an issue at the high schools. A lot of your classrooms at the high school are very small for 29 students, which is sort of the current max class size for classrooms at the high school. So if, for instance, if you have a classroom, if we're designing for 29 students, who would expect that classroom to be about 880 square feet? In some cases, your classrooms may be 680 square feet at the high school. And so what that means is the desks and the chairs are really filling the entire space, and there isn't the ability or the flexibility within those spaces to kind of reconfigure, readjust, do group projects, more in-depth hands-on. Kind of learning is much harder to accomplish in a classroom that is undersized. Outdated furniture, again, that's just an era. Furniture isn't really designed for that flexibility either, or reconfiguring or adjusting teaching in different modalities. Lack of natural light, again, biggest issue there is the high school. Because of the footprint of the building, the interior spaces in the building, the classrooms around the outside have nice natural light where kids can see the outside air and see the outside environment, but you have kind of these layers of classrooms on the inside that are sort of buried deep inside the building. And so ideally, we'd like to see natural light in every primary lighting space in the classroom. And then lack of breakout space, we kind of talked about that a little bit before. This image from Fair Park, you kind of see a little dash out in the hallway where if a student needs to make up a test or something like that, there really isn't a third space outside the classroom for that kid to go to do that. And so you do tend, we see this all over the place, in schools all over the place. People try to use the corridor as kind of that augmented sort of learning space or that separate learning space outside of the classroom. Problem is, once a kid is out here in the corridor, you've lost all visual contact of them, and so supervision gets lost. And so if we have the ability to do that today, we can make that work a lot better, I guess is what we're getting at. We don't have that ability within the buildings because of the era that they were put in. And finally, library spaces. Obviously, we know technology has changed, and because technology has changed, the way that libraries work has kind of changed along with that. So libraries today tend to be much less about, you know, being the place where all the books are, and they are more about the place where we go to get resources, to work together, to weed through resources, to learn about how to use resources. I would say your libraries have had some updates over time, some little sort of hodgepodge attempts at kind of creating some different things and different resources within them. But by and large, the actual physical space of your library is pretty much the way that they were when they were designed, with the exception of a massive library at high school. Okay, that was a lot of me talking. Questions or comments?
There are cases where there are kind of competing interests. I'll give a silly example, but minimal layers of security and lack of natural light.
Yeah.
On the one hand, you'd say, great, no windows, no worry about intruders through window. On the other hand, it's lack of natural light. So how do you balance that when you're talking about optimiz- optimizing this?
Great point. I would say that those work hand-to-hand, that actually the collaboration space, lack of natural light, and minimal layers of security are all closely related to each other. In order to really get the transparency that you want between the classroom and sort of an additional learning space outside of the classroom, you almost have to have additional layers of security built in so that you can take advantage of that transparency. Otherwise, the glass that, even in places where you do have some transparency or some attempts to create some of those environments, in many cases, they're not functioning correctly because of those lack of duplicate layers of security. Teachers then are papering up the windows right to, for intruder situations.
And two, one of the things that you'll see in our buildings, when you talk about the issue of light and security in most new designs or updates or anything like that, you don't have functioning windows. I don't have air in every building that I have. So now, when you're talking about, I have light, but I have wide-open windows, you know, I have those kinds of things. So it's also that integration of building systems and, you know, that complexity of safety. It's like, you don't see people designing like that where you have that.
So, you know, of course, this is what I'm passionate about. I would love to talk through ideas about how we could make that better and try and address all those needs simultaneously, but that's going to be our next steps number one, right? So first, what we're trying to do is just make sure you're informed about where you kind of stack up and what your issues are. And then the next step is sort of kind of figure out, what do we want to address, how do we prioritize, or where do we go next?
Right.
Well, I think to your point, Chris, the other issue that, you know, our districts kind of wrestle with is the difference of safety and safety protocols for, you know, a crisis and extr- extr- intruder kind of crisis, right? A hostage situation, a she being something horrible like that, which unfortunately, you know, happens, but still pretty rarely compared to everyday supervision, everyday mental health, everyday support for safety, whether that's bullying or, the list goes on, right? So the balancing of everyday needs versus creating your school so that it's a fortress, right? And where does light come in, where's entrances come in, and where are all these breakout spaces? And part of it's procedural, part of it's space, part of it's all these layers, and that's.
And sure, we don't have dark corridors in the back where nobody knows what happens in those corridors.
Right. Trying to open things up so that you guys can keep an eye on students where they are. Yeah, it's a tough situation.
So I guess what I'm, what we're trying to say is, it is holistic, right? We have to look at all those things together and develop solutions that consider all of them and working in tandem with each other. Any other questions?
Okay. No, Mr. Patterson, too, so we're in order. We're keeping an eye on him.
All right. Kat always reminds me that I'm really boring when I talk about this section.
That's not, it's not the right word, Chris. It's just a lot of math.
There is some math involved here. So building capacity and utilization. So I want to start by just defining some terms and talk, try and talk fairly high level about what we mean by the numbers that we use in capacity. And then we can dig deeper if you want to, or we can move on, depending on where you're at from there. So capacity really is just about how many seats, how many kids can you fit in a building based on your current operational policies and uses, right? So based on current use, how many actual seats are there in a building? And then we look at capacity in two ways. We look at maximum capacity, which is really just every seat, every room, every hour of the day, how many seats are there? And then we look at functional capacity. And functional capacity is really the number that we're looking at, because maximum capacity is unrealistic. You can't actually fill every seat every hour of every day. Kids don't come, for instance, if I'm looking at an elementary school, they don't come neatly packaged in groups of 28 per grade level. So if your maximum class size is 29, and your actual class size is probably going to be 25 in one room and 29 in another and 27, right? Because that's kind of the way that actually works. When we look at high schools, so at elementaries and middle schools, as we're looking at capacity, we're really just looking at graded classrooms, right? If you have first grade, second grade, and the other spaces that you have in the building are really just support spaces that support those core classrooms. We're really just counting up the number of seats in the core classrooms, essentially, based on your desired number of students per classroom. When we look at high school, it's a little bit different because in high school, the kids don't have a, sort of one room, and then they go from there. They're going all over the place. So essentially, what that means is that we're counting all the rooms as contributing to the capacity, but then our utilization factor is now not 90% of 75, because we have to account for some complexity in the scheduling to move around. And 75% really works out to your classes being full, I think it's six, six out of eight periods per day, right? You have eight periods total to study, so six is sort of your realistic kind of, ideally, that you could go six. In some cases, maybe a little higher, but that's how we're at. So when we look at the high school, we also kind of look at your actual utilization versus that optimal utilization of around 75% as well. Okay, I'm gonna keep driving forward. We actually calculate capacity then by three different methods. So what most people think of as capacity is by district desired class size. So that's kind of what I was referring to earlier. If the, if the district maximum class size is 29, then we look at the number of classrooms available, 29 seats per class, that gives us the maximum capacity and my functional capacity to it, and that's your capacity for the building. In order to kind of provide a little more context and a little deeper analysis, we do two additional calculations as sort of check to that standard capacity calculation. This is our primary measure by district class size, but these others kind of serve as reference points to check that. So one check is capacity by learning area. And in that method, what we're really doing is looking at the size of your classrooms, the physical size of the classroom, and saying, based on industry practices, how many students would we expect there to be in a class of this size? So for instance, if the class size is 600 square feet and it's going to be an optimum class size of 880, we would apply a square foot number to that and say we would expect to see, you know, 20 students in that class instead of 30. And so we have sort of industry standards that we use based on what we see for square foot per student, and then we calculate square footage that way. So what that helps us to seek to understand is, based on your district desired class size and discrepancy between learning area, it just gives us a snapshot of, do you have a lot of learning area for your class sizes, or do you not? Kind of where there's contrast there. And then finally, we do, excuse me, a check by gross building area, which just looks at the whole size of the building versus industry standards for similar buildings of similar types and similar sizes. So again, that's kind of a gut check of, your high school's this big, we would expect a high school that serves this many students to be this big. And discrepancies there, again, help us to understand a little bit more what's going on behind the scenes. Do you have more gym and pool space than average or less, or what are those other amenities that might be contributing to that? So they just give us little snapshots that help us dig a little deeper into understanding what's going on in your district. Okay? All good on this, before I dive into the actual.
Seeing lots of math.
There's one question.
Yeah.
To help in by scope. So I hear you talk a lot about during the school day, and I hear you talk a lot about maximum student classroom size. And what about, like at the elementary schools, we have like wraparound programs, like before after school, and a lot going on inside the building other than the school day. So would that be out of scope of this analysis or a consideration later?
Yeah, I think we hear about that as we do our educational adequacy assessment. We hear about that a little bit, and we might include some points here and there about it in there. But for the actual capacity, what we're really looking at is capacity of students during the day. So if there are shortcomings in other areas, like athletics, it's another big area, right? Where the needs for your spaces to meet the needs of your athletic programs may be very different than the needs of those spaces to meet, you know, core class content. Our capacity study really is looking at core class more than that. Good question. Anything else? All right, let's screen where I'll work. This is kind of what we found. The highlighted number across the top is your actual capacity by desired class size, which again is that kind of baseline, sort of standard capacity calculation. And then in gray, we've included a comparison of learning area and gross building area, so you can kind of see those next to each other and help understand the story there. We also have percent occupied based on, you know, if we were to put all the students that we would expect you to be in and put in there per capacity, where are you at now in comparison? So current enrollment, for instance, at Decora, you're basically 71% full. If we were to take the full capacity versus where you're at now. What you can kind of see here, high school is the most full, actually, based on capacity versus current enrollment at 86%. So that's, you know, getting up there. And then Badger is where there's the most room at only 54% full at this point. Okay? Makes sense?
That's a snapshot, and we're gonna show you how it kind of illustrates.
All right. Because I'd like to geek out on this a little bit. Sort of the methodology behind all of this, we're gonna show one example of an elementary school, and then an example of a middle school and high school, kind of some of the background. So all of these are in that full presentation. You can go in and dig in per school and kind of dig in as deep as you want later. But just to kind of walk you through what's in there. If you look at this chart, you can kind of see a use plan, and then a listing of the actual classrooms and sizes and everything associated with that. This is kind of the snapshot of where the math all worked out in the box here, and then the utilization key. So for elementary schools, excuse me, we're really looking at what are your coordinated graded classrooms? Those are the rooms that contribute to your capacity, and they're shown in that sort of cyan light blue color. And then we have all the spaces that are those sort of support spaces where kids go from those classrooms. So those are our hyper-blue-purply color, right? So those are all the spaces that kids might go from there. We have special ed classrooms, and adventure classrooms, libraries, gym, et cetera, that are those accessory spots. And then, because there is space in your building, what we found, and you're, again, you're not different than other school districts, but just like at your home, there is no such thing as an empty bedroom. If you have an empty bedroom, you put stuff in it, right? And that tends to be true of your district as well. So what you see in this sort of salmon color is rooms where there are other non-core classroom functions, but in talking through what your space needs are, those are rooms that you could reasonably convert back to core classrooms if you needed them. So in other words, the rooms in pink contribute to your core classroom, even though they're not currently graded classrooms, they could be graded classrooms. Does that make sense?
What does FL mean?
FL is Family Mason, which is like kind of a country name.
One thing Bob and the team have talked about a lot is, is that it doesn't mean that program goes away or they don't have a space. It's just that if Jen and I both have full-sized classrooms, our program could be run in half of the classroom. You could split Jen's classroom in half. We could suffice in there, and now you'd have a full-sized classroom at that point. So it's more about the square footage. So those are, you could pick other rooms within this diagram that could also suffice you be in that salmon area at the same.
And if that space is available, of course, you're gonna utilize it to give more space to those things, but it's striking that balance between, if we're giving you a capacity number, it's how many reasonably could you fit, not just how many can we fit right now. Okay. Middle school, the capacity calculation is actually very similar for your middle schools. For some districts, we actually calculate capacity more like high school, but for your district, we're calculating it more similar to an elementary school capacity. And the reason for that is that your students do move around between rooms, but they kind of have a home house. So within your middle school concepts, there's a house or a group of, is it four, uh, five classrooms per house in your district? So you have five classrooms, and the kids primarily need between those five classrooms. That's their home, that's their house, and then they all move out at similar times to go to specials in other areas of the building. So because of that model, we do it very similar to an elementary school, where the graded classrooms of each house count as our core spaces, and then those other spaces, those resource spaces, don't contribute to the capacity. And similar to the elementary school, we have those salmon-colored spaces, which are spaces that could legitimately be core classrooms if necessary. They're not necessary now, but they could be if needed. And so you'll see much more of those pink spaces here at Badger, because there is the most capacity available at Badger. So when you look at silverware, you'll see less pink, because there's less capacity in silverware than there is in Badger. And then the, the actual chart, we've kind of highlighted those rooms that aren't serving as core classrooms now, but could be for you, just so you can kind of see what that logic was based on. All right, finally, we get to the high school, which is a more complex calculation, and I'm going to just spend a moment here to kind of show you some of this data, because I think this will help you understand how the buildings are being used. And then the colors are different here because they mean something different in this diagram. So what we're looking at, if you look at the utilization chart here, is how many periods per day are those classes actually used? Because at the high school, there, kids aren't starting at a core classroom, all the classrooms contribute to capacity. All the, all the spaces that a kid might have a class scheduled in contributes to the total capacity, and then we use that 75% utilization. So what we're trying to show you in this diagram, between the blue, the red, and the green, green is sort of what we would expect for kind of optimal utilization, use five or six periods a day. Blue is a space that's using zero or four periods a day, and red is a space that's used seven periods per day for maximum utilization. So what you can see is, by and large, at the high school, your classrooms are fairly well utilized. There's a lot of green here, and then a few reds and a few blues. Kind of really like your high school would look like in terms of utilization overall. So we said optimal utilization is around 75%. I think you fleshed out here just under that. I don't remember the exact number, I think it might have been 69% or something like that. So you're, you're kind of right there. The contrast, though, and why we show that there is room in your high school, is all about class size, really. So the average number of kids per class is a little bit less than that max target of 29, and that's where the capacity is coming in. It's not about the rooms not being used, it's about class sizes maybe being a little smaller. So as we were digging into that a little further, this is the second floor, it's the more chart, we put together this additional graphic that kind of helped illustrate some of the challenge here. What this graphic shows is not how often each classroom is used, but what the size of each classroom is versus what the ideal or standard-sized classroom with that number of students would be. So in this chart, when you see red, that's a classroom that's undersized by 50 square feet or more for the number of students that would be served in your district desired class size. Blue is oversized for the number of students that would be served in your district desired class size. So what you can see.
Question.
Yeah?
For the fieldhouse, is that taking into account the fact that it's both high schools?
Uh, it is, yeah. So essentially, what we're looking at there is two classes at a time with the fieldhouse and two classes at a time in the auxiliary gym.
And are one of those locker rooms a boys' locker room?
The...
Both say girls' locker rooms.
They are on the first floor.
Yeah.
The boys' locker rooms are in the basement.
Yeah. Thank you. The basement plan actually isn't in this diagram here in this presentation, but it is in the folder board, so that there aren't any core classrooms in the basement.
And Bob, just to clarify, when you're talking about the fieldhouse, you're talking about it from an academic point of view?
Correct, yeah. So we're looking at this for PE uses, really, not for athletic uses. So it's not abnormal, actually, for our fieldhouses and auxiliary gyms to show as blue or as oversized in this kind of analysis, because what is actually driving the size of that fieldhouse is probably more your athletic uses than your actual PE uses, right? Your after-hours uses. So what I did want to point out is, there's a correlation between the size of your classrooms and the smaller class sizes versus district desired average, which I thought was useful for you to know. Many of these classrooms, especially up here on the second floor, some of these classrooms get significantly smaller for the number of students served. And the chart is here on the side. You can't read it on the screen, I know, but you can dig into this further on your own and kind of see. We've listed for you the area of the classroom, the desired class size for each room, which isn't always 29, 29 is sort of the standard, but Tim sort of helped us go through, and for some, for some classes, the scheduling practice is a little less because of the nature of that, or CTE and other programs like that. And then we have an ideal area there, and we show you what the discrepancy is. So you can actually kind of go through there and see where those discrepancies are. Okay? So all of that goes to creating these numbers here. So current enrollment of 1953, capacity by district desired class size of 2279, when we look at by learning area, the capacity actually drops because some of those class sizes are small. And then by gross building area, it's actually drops a little bit more for the number of students served in this building. In new construction, we would actually expected that building to be a little bit bigger than it is today. Any questions on capacity and utilization? I know that's a deep dive. We'll go back to this overview slide, and then if anyone has a question to...
It sounds like your class sizes are just too high for this case.
Um, yeah, in some, not everywhere, but in some cases, yes, I would, I would recommend that this one.
So you reconcile those two things. Earlier on, you said these buildings are actually under, you know, 60% unrealized, but classrooms are not.
Yeah.
So really, that has to, in theory, there's plenty of space, it's just how we weigh it out.
There is plenty of space, but the space might not always be the right space.
Right, right. So it's optimized, it's the right size, it's small, it's big.
You might not align it to programs you're, and by your teaching of today, and things that, obviously, programs and services you're providing are much different than the enrollment in this building, personally.
Sure. And I think when we talk about capacity, it's not just capacity what we're talking about either. It's capacity compared to educational adequacy compared to building conditions. All three of those things really have to live together. So for instance, one of the themes we saw in educational adequacy is that you don't have spaces for breakout work outside of your classrooms in most of your buildings, with the exception of your two middle schools. But your other buildings don't have that kind of third space available. If we look at capacity, capacity, you're really just looking at the classroom space. So we're saying, yes, there is capacity in your buildings, but also there's a shortage of other types of spaces in your building. So if we look at capacity all by itself, we're not telling you the whole story there either, because I, I can't say that the right thing is just to shove a bunch more students in the buildings because capacity is there, but we also have to consider the educational adequacy concerns and building conditions.
Right. This would mean from a building condition point of view, if you add more kids to the classrooms, they may not be able to be ventilated properly, they may not have, you know, just the core functions needed to operate from.
And that's the point of the assessment, looking at it from all these different lenses. It's not just one, one aspect, it's all of them.
Okay. Any other questions on capacity?
Again, you have all the buildings detailed in the full report. We can certainly process that. If you have additional questions, you can, Clarion, reach out to Jen or Tim, we can support that conversation. They've been deeply involved in this work, so I'm pretty confident they could probably have prevented this, or Bob.
So this is a summary again. We just wanted to bring this slide back up to reiterate what our key takeaways are, how that we've gone through kind of the three lights of the stool, if I could call it that, which is in this, this study. So now, seeing all of that information, digesting it at least on cursory level.
Thinking to this, review the next slide, which is our way of trying to capture the highlights of each of those categories here in the snapshot board.
Yeah, this is another way to look at the summary as well. So... So you can see each score broken down by building, each summary score broken down by building.
As well as then, we have a data capacity data and percent occupied for each building. So hopefully this gives you a little resource for you to kind of understand where you're at in each building.
Hopefully now you see why it's taken six months.
Yeah, go to the report and look at all the detail behind every single thing in there.
I guess I have a lot more to comment. So the goal of this is all to, for future planning, future planning purposes of what we're going to do with schools, you know. But what I see is kind of a, I guess, kind of a problem from this, from this analysis is we're using numbers today. You know, you take on a big, a big project like this, we're talking three years down the road with completion as that could happen. Have we taken into account the declining enrollment for three years, possibly four years down the road? And has that number been kind of, I guess, somehow factored into the projected completion date? Or capacity or anything like that? I mean, obviously, you know, you look at our numbers here, you know, we're declining, you know, there's, there's already numbers out there and, you know, estimates of what we're going to have for enrollment and price for it down the road. So we have numbers like that just based on, you know, what's happening in burden rates.
So, so yeah, that's a great point. So there is that separate study, we've seen that the district had done the APL study that kind of projects where, and it does show, right, some declining enrollment. So I think that's the next sort of step of this, of this study. So as we start to look at, okay, what do we do with that data? We can't look at any solutions, right, without comparing that to what does that do to your future, to, to your future enrollment, right? As we look at a solution, we're not looking at it based on today, but where does that project out over time? And so in answer to that, in this report, no, those APL, the changes to enrollment aren't in this report. But as we start to get into those next phases of starting to consider what's next, that absolutely has to be part of our report.
I think one of the critical things that you as a board will have to think about in the process and your job is to get cost direction, is that within those report, within that report, for all the different analysis, there's different models, right? There's different baselines for potential enrollment projections. And you need to come to some consensus on which of those you think is the most accurate, which is the one we should be benchmarking against because you're exactly right. When we think about, you know, we're a long range plan, five years, 10 years out, you want your buildings to be appropriately sized to support everything we just talked about here from all the different angles, as well as just from the number of kids you expect, right? And so there's different models and depending on how you feel about some of those different methodologies within the report, that would direct us to come up with solutions based around those. But yeah, that's absolutely the next step. Other questions about the report or the findings?
So you put Mr. Ross on the spot, so here, is there anything that you heard here that's surprising or that you might overtly disagree with?
Um, no, actually, I was, I was really relieved because all the stuff that I had given you before, this kind of corrot rates, everything, it all kind of came together. I mean, I, I mean, this was really necessary work by, by the same token. I think everybody probably had a feeling that this is kind of where we were.
Any other big surprises or takeaways from any of you on the board?
I think some of them are actually better numbers than I was expecting, knowing, especially when you look at the year built and then the numerous additions to renovations, sometimes when those, yeah, those five are sold. So I, I mean, I think some of them are actually in better shape than I, despite me looking at this.
I think that is a credit to your district and how you, you know, nursed these buildings along over the years. But at the same time, right, as the age, there are things that need a little bit bigger or are bigger investment than what you can just sort of handle on your day to day maintenance list, right? And that's to be expected.
Yeah, I could not say that enough in reporting this out is how, how well the maintenance has been in this district and trying to keep things, pulling things together and keep things going.
That's why I'm very hard.
Yeah.
Okay, if we start looking at cost analysis for things that we move forward, when you guys do your reports, are you looking at, will there be some comparative data for if you wanted to take Green Tree Elementary and bring it up to code, up to space, renovate it, you know, get it, get a whole building renovation done versus building a new school? Is, is there going to be some comparison there? Like, you know, it's going to cost you only 20% more to have a new building versus, versus trying to renovate this entire existing building to make it what you want?
So I, I don't know if we will see that as part of the next cost exercise, but somewhere along this process of studying options that always comes into the play. We have to look at what is the cost of upgrading versus what is the cost of new construction versus, yeah. So somewhere along the line, that analysis will be there as we start to study options. Usually that kind of comes along as we start to develop the big ideas about where we're going, right?
Now, like at, you know, Badger with the most recent renovation, you know, part of the school was maintained, only building was built and then part of the school was torn down, you know? And so I think that's a possibility for some of these other ones versus, especially if you tear down and rebuild or versus no tear down and just re, we don't really have to use it. But at some point, I mean, even just the foundation of these buildings, if I don't suddenly go and get 50 to 100 years old.
And I, and I don't want to put that in completely negative light. Certainly, I think there are plenty of buildings of 50 to 100. If you invest in those buildings, it doesn't necessarily mean that a building that's approaching 100 years old can't go on for another 100 years if it's invested in. It just means that in order to, to get there, it's going to likely take a larger investment, right?
And then look at the claim, you've got, you know, overhaul the mechanical system. So you're investing in that building instead of putting dollars in it to keep that whole building flowing.
Worse than they are at some of the older, uh, older buildings, right?
Yeah, it's right in stuff, so.
Yeah, and Bob won't say this, but I'll say it for Bob. Bob is one of our leading historic preservation architects in the firm. And he's got some real strong portfolio work with renovating buildings that have, that are 60, 70, 80, 100 plus years old. So if that becomes a priority for you and your community and what you direct us to do, there's some really cool things you can do. You just have, it is, it's the, it's the cost benefit analysis, right? And, you know, I think there's a spectrum of analysis that you'll have to consider, right? It's the cost of, there is a cost of doing nothing, by the way, because nothing is free. I mean, the reality is there's, there are things have to be done, so there's a cost of doing nothing, right? And then there's the cost of something in the middle, and then there's the cost of a rebuild potentially, right? And that's a spectrum. But we don't typically start out by like exploring all of those things because first of all, they're not practical. Second of all, you'd be incredibly overwhelmed and we create a whole lot of spin for no reason, right? So what we're trying to do in the process is ground you in information that makes sense and in response to what you and you think your community wants us to investigate, which is why we don't have solutions now, because we just did the study. FinDARF is going to be giving you some of the cost perspective in the January meeting. You can talk about that now if you want, unless there's other questions, just we can skip to that real quick here.
We'll want to talk about, yeah, John, did you have a question?
I said, and I'm just curious, just because I've been to Jackson and know kind of some of the situation that they're going through. But how does, I mean, they have, they have kind of a courtyard in the middle of school. How does that flooding and the mud coming through the door and stuff, how did that factor into your? I'm assuming that would be in the civil site portion of it. I'm just, I guess I see it as a fair and, you know, when waters come through, you know, the exterior doors from a, from, from a courtyard, you know, I would essentially call it a aquarium, you know, with flooding and stuff like that. I mean, I wouldn't expect it to be that high.
I would encourage you to go to your full scorecard with all the breakouts and dig a little deeper. I can bring that at the end here if you want us to.
I was curious, I mean, are you curious how you do this?
It does factor in, it has factored in. We, we looked at it extensively and the principal shared some feedback on how that isn't working as well. But what you have to keep in mind is there's probably 10 criteria per site, so they all factor into that conversation.
So you're seeing that role of average score of the, that, yeah.
But you have the detail for each score, right?
And we can always circle back to it.
No, I'm going to get to all of March, just kind of figure it out.
Well, it's a process, this is the schedule you saw when we're here, home to go, kind of laying out the whole plan. Go ahead, Bob, so this, this tracks us out for months. This is where we are right now, so we're here December 11th. I'm going to think about that for a second, two weeks till Christmas. Um, yeah, so sorry, I just freaked everybody else out, freaked myself out by saying that. December 11th, we're here reporting on the assessment. On January 22nd, so a little over a month from now, we're going to be back. And FinDARF is going to be leading the conversation and they're going to help you understand from this building conditions assessment perspective only. So pretty much everything Bob talked about related to capacity and educational, educational adequacy, that doesn't matter for the next conversation. The next conversation is all what Jackie talked about, building conditions, the system is the, you know, I kind of unofficially say, if, if we need to fix it like today, what we're fixing it today costs. And that's what FinDARF is going to help us understand. So go ahead. Kyle, is this you or Ryan are going to talk a little bit about what to expect at that January meeting?
Yeah, yeah. So again, some talking points prior to the day, but over the last couple of weeks, we've been working in the UA and the district. As the UA has been kind of putting the finishing touches on their facilities assessment, we've been kind of getting a pin into these buildings and walking through. So over the last couple of weeks, like Tim and I have been walking through buildings, taking a look at things and kind of determining what UA is looking better and kind of sort of put together our budgets. So right now, we're only, only then focusing on what the information that kind of Jackie has been presenting so far. The next steps are for, take a look at Bob's, I'll let you take. But right now, we're kind of just walking through the buildings, doing walkthroughs. There's a lot of things that we cannot necessarily see without doing exhaustive investigation, but these, one of these walks are just walking through the buildings and taking a look at what UA is looking better. Our estimates are based on a few things, one of them being our comprehensive historical database with the districts that we've worked on in the past that we can look at from, from the past and kind of look at together as we do our budgets, being at current market conditions and including the estimated inflation rates. There's several factors that we look at, kind of put an average to factor in those. And then also sometimes we engage some of our MEP partners to take a look at some of the building system and kind of get the most current information on that in person. But again, just want to reiterate, these, these budgets are not intended to create solutions. They're strictly looking at building condition aspect.
So to your question earlier of Chad, the comment would be for Jackson, they're, they're going to come with a number that's, that's just going to identify from the building condition side of things, what those needs are.
And we were just to bring it up to the green numbers?
Yep. Not to address any of the space issues, not to address any of the other needs that have been identified?
Not solving the, the capitorium issue, not looking at adding collaboration space, just looking at addressing those conditions, I should say.
Just like it was in 2073.
That's right. I was going to add, Brian, I think, going back to the photo of the, the boarder, you know, what are you doing here, us doing? You're not looking to, at, at some cases, you can't replace in kind, if we're to say that, right? So we're talking internally with the district, like what, what would be the closest in kind to a building system, depending on what we're looking at, so.
Yes, you wouldn't replace it with one the size of a train.
Right.
Right? But that's important, that's important perspective and we found that districts that are similar tiers of aging buildings and declining enrollment in particular, you started wondering about this capacity and the future state of the buildings. One of the metrics that the boards asked for sooner rather than later is, well, give me some sense of cost on just if I had to fix what was absolutely broken today. And that's what that is, that number is. So it helps start, helps you start to evaluate where, where do we continue to invest in buildings? What is that? And we can certainly, if you direct us to at that point, say, okay, you know, what would have, what would it cost to replace Jackson? You've talked about that in the past, right? That doesn't mean that's actually what you're going to do, nor would you necessarily replace it exactly as it is. I mean, that's, that starts to get into the solutions. Well, what were they new Jackson to click or a new anything, let's just have them, you know? That's the next step of kind of what Bob likes to call the big ideas phase. Let's generate the, what if we did this and what if we did that? But what we're also hoping to do is as we get this information, you've gotten the first step, the building information from us, layered to that kind of this initial cost perspective from FinDARF, is to in February and into early March, is to start having, sharing that information with your community and with your staff so that people start to understand what your, what your current state is and start talking about the questions that need to be discussed here in West Bend. Where do we go from here? How do we prioritize tackling this? Because it doesn't help to create a mountain of facility needs that you don't know how to address, right? So the sooner we start to have conversations around what should we prioritize, then we can use that to start creating potential solutions that you would actually want to try to tackle.
True.
And then timing comes into it.
So John's, John's question I think is very relevant as we look at it forward. Jen, does that, is that an internal, is that, is that a district study that happens to look at future capacity needs? Or is that something done through our?
So we're a little bit of both. So they're aware that kind of on the backend, when this highlights different buildings, needs, costs, all of that, there is a layer where we're having to take kind of each one offline and reconfiguring enrollment, what that, could that look like? That's the intersection of our work with that tool that we have. So right now on the backend, again, I don't, I can't, I don't want to presuppose anything on the backend. I'm taking every single elementary school and intermediate, I'm taking them all offline, reconfiguring enrollment, what does, again, through their work on capacity look like? Where do I, what's a tipping point because you don't want to overprout a school? I can't be faced 10 years from now going, oh gee, I closed too many schools, I, I did this. So that there is an intersection of our work.
And that fits where in that big timeline?
Sure, if you want to go back, Bob. Oh, try and stand up and show it. I get, I focus sleep. Okay, so here's where we are with costs, right here in January. This is where we're talking about holding community conversations. This is the screening spot of where we start getting direction from you here in the winter and late winter and spring. And really, and one of the things that you like to do is be able to take some of those conceptual ideas that Bob will help you identify and put some solutions to it, like, well, what if we did this and what if we did that? I don't even, not going to make up other what ifs there, but you know, we, we all play around them. And then FinDARF will start putting some cost estimates to that so that we start understanding, okay, this means X, this means Y. Because with every cost, should be some discussion around what that might cost to taxpayers, like what's that financial implication, right? And ideally, we're, we're running all through some scenarios and then we're going to go back out to the community in late spring and have another round of community conversations with some proposed, you know, preliminary options. Well, what do you think about this? What do you think about this? Should we advance? And all of this, again, is designed to see if we, if your community and if you are starting to see what would be the first step in the long range plan, the first work you would tackle. If you're prepared to put something together for November, this would allow you to get there. You might decide in here, you're not ready for this, and this would shift you back to the next potential election opportunity. But this just keeps us on point so that essentially by the end of the summer, feeling like you've got something that would be appropriate, we can be in position to take that to your community. But that's driven by process and, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the first step tonight was really understanding your facility needs. We're going to be back in January, FinDARF is to tell you a little bit, some more cost perspective about that. And then we'll begin talking about the dialogue with the community. So I guess some homework we might suggest for you guys to be thinking about is looking forward to February and starting to have those conversations with the community. You know, what are the kind of questions that you would want to ask your community members about the types of needs that we've identified? What would, what would, I think a logical question, what do you think are the priorities? Is it addressing our most aging buildings? Is it about capacity? Is it about? Is it about learning environments and kind of some of the things that you've heard about, release small classrooms? Is it about program opportunities?
And one of the things that we had talked about, I think it was John had a meeting, is just having a dialogue. We've been developing communications team around what engagement could look like. We all want kind of maybe a bit more than what has been done in the past, so just for us to set up some ideas, put that together, we know we want face to face, we know we want additional opportunities, but something for the board to think about, so Chris and I can make space on an agenda to have a little bit more dialogue. And again, our team will put some things together around our ideas, but I think that's important, because you're all highly engaged in our schools, our communities, and represent people to think about what that could look like, what you'd like to see, not just the questions that we'd ask, but maybe some formats, designs, that would be helpful for us too.
You're talking about a dialogue, like...
What community engagement looks like.
Yeah, you know, we're sitting up here, there, a lot of questions outside of the standard.
Yeah, so maybe...
You know?
So generally, what we've seen in the past and what we've been talking about is, yeah, you're at a school, you're having collaborative conversations, we're there, you know, school district officials are there, we're making sure to invite our community members, other representatives, all of those things, where it's really going all in.
I think it's important for like an open forum. I think you'll only be able to, you know, not just have their two minutes of public speaking, and then, I really wish I could have asked this after, or talked about this, you know, I think it should be a secondary thing, possibly at the high school auditorium, you know, questions can ask, people can answer.
Kind of where we're headed in that, certainly not something we need to solve, but kind of in that homework list, so that we can make space for that, to dig in and give you kind of what it, what we're thinking right now. But that, the board's commitment is to a high level engagement with, you know, a lot of stakeholders, whether it's parents, community members, people who don't have kids in their system, the students, the staff, all of those pieces and perspectives, people who work for, need in the community in different ways, that's also helpful. So just kind of adding to that homework list that we're talking about.
Yeah. I think the goal is to have a lot of different voices and a lot of different people participating and different strategies for what can allow meaningful conversation. I mean, you're, you're wrestling with some big, big questions, and we need people to be, be at the table for that, see where it takes you. So that was our presentation. It's 7:02, our goal is seven. I have all that mapped from Bob. Thank you for your time and your focus. This is a lot of information, process it, send questions to Jen and Tim, and we're happy to continue to support it, and we hope you guys all have a great holiday, take a deep breath and get a little rest.
Any kind of questions? Any injections to adjourning? Does it require action? We'll send a jersey. Thank you.